Yes, thank you. Mr. Wills. We are not yet sure that we wish or need to hear from you on on ground two. We will give that some further thought, but before we do, we would like to hear Mr. Metcalfe on ground one. In so far as there are points on which you think you can be of assistance, Mr. Metcalfe. I appreciate that you are neutral. And we don't want to force you into an amicus role if it doesn't fit comfortably or with your duties to your client. But it's always helpful to have another view or other submissions on issues of this character. You will have gathered from the debate this morning that we are primarily interested in the I suppose, to put it very crudely, how low the bar is or what is the nature of the bar represented by what Lady Hale says in para forty-five of Dring. Advancing the open justice principle slash, they're glossed in the next sentence as good reason, glossed in the next sentence as legitimate interest. If, I appreciate you don't want to address the facts of this particular case, but any submissions you have that will help guide us to the right answer on that question would be much appreciated.
Thank you, my lord.
You can, of course, address anything else, but I thought you might want to steer from us.
In fact, my opening to your lordships was going to be to address a point that has arisen that we weren't going to address in relation to ground two. Since my learned friend hasn't addressed you on ground two and indeed may never do so, as the case may be. I will
If he does, you will too.
If he does, there is a point that I may be obliged to address in the event that he has the opportunity to do so.
Yes, of course. No, no, if there's a part two on this about ground two, we'll of course want to hear from you on that as well.
I'm grateful, my lord. If I may just, also in perhaps some difficulty, as you will have appreciated from our skeleton argument, the commissioner's primary interest in this matter were the comments of Lady Justice Andrew crushing permission.
And what you wrote about that was helpful and interesting, but you will appreciate why. I quite understand why Lady Justice Andrews suggested that, but I'm not sure she was aware of what was going on in the background or whether she was or not. We take the view that it's not going to help the the consultation if we barge in on points that we don't need to decide.
Perhaps it might assist the court, your lordships, if I refer, I had the opportunity over the shorter term to look at the task force or rather the
Look at the what, sorry?
To, I had the opportunity over the shorter term, my lords, to look at the terms of reference for the Open Justice and Transparency Board.
Yeah, oh, the open justice, oh, right, yes, I looked, I looked at the minutes of the Civil Justice Rules Committee, but I didn't look at the Transparency Board.
Well, perhaps, I regret we haven't had the opportunity to print off a copy, but perhaps if your lordships will permit me just to read aloud
Yes, of course.
Very quickly from the terms of reference. They are to lead and coordinate the promotion and of transparency and open justice across courts and tribunals in England and Wales. Next, to establish a stakeholder committee to assist the board. Third, following wide engagement with interested parties to finalize the key objectives. Fourth, to promote the key objectives across courts and tribunals in England and Wales. Fifth, to identify, if necessary, establish appropriate subcommittees in each jurisdiction of courts and tribunals in England and Wales to assess the delivery of those objectives. I'm summarizing at this point. And lastly, in partnership with the Courts and Tribunal Service and the Ministry of Justice, support and coordinate that programme across the courts and tribunals in England and Wales to achieve the key objectives. Now, my reason for taking your lordships to those terms of reference is first of all to point out that they are very high level.
Yes.
They will of necessity require a great deal of further detail and drilling down, which, of course, the board and its stakeholder committees and subcommittees and so forth will do so. Given, and your lordships will have more familiarity with these internal workings than the commissioner, but one can look at those terms of reference and their generality and see straight away that this is not a task which will be completed in the next six months and unlikely perhaps in the next eighteen months. My learned friend's skeleton argument adverts to the fact that the Rules Committee has already put on hold its own work in relation to the revision of CPR five point four C. And of course, your lordships have already indicated that you don't wish to step on the toes or express any view in relation to that. But I would say in relation to this, this is a case concerning the upper tribunal, which of course is not bound to point the CPR.
No, but one of the questions that I think Lady Justice Andrews raised, that both of you therefore have said something about, is whether the rules should be the same or the practice, whatever it turns out to be, should be the same as regards access to by non-parties to court records in the tribunal system as in the, as in the court system. And as I think you both point out, certainly you, I think, point out, the principles are bound to be, the rules are bound to be the same, that's already been made clear in Dring, but how they play out may be different in the two systems and in different parts of the tribunal system. And apart for a few platitudes about how it would be desirable that they be as close as reasonably possible, that's not going to for us to start saying, yes, the rules should be the same or should be the same except in the following respects. Court rules are going to be, following every consideration, seems to us to be unhelpful to everybody. I'm not quite sure why I said that, but I was responding to what I think you were slightly inviting us to say something about these points, were you?
I was inviting, not necessarily to say about the broader desirability of the rules being the same between the courts and the tribunals. Although, of course, we do invite this court to recognize, to make such comments as it sees fit as to the distinct role of the upper tribunal and indeed the differences in terms of procedure and in practice.
I don't think we will see fit because we don't know, we don't know, this is just what the respective rules committees for the tribunal system and for the High Court do. And they will now apparently do so within a framework or in working in some way under the umbrella of, we don't quite know how it's intended to work, of the Transparency Board. But between them, the Transparency Board and the specific rules committees are the right people to make those sorts of distinctions and not us. They all know about their respective jurisdictions in a way that we don't.
Well, save only this, this court has already heard detailed submissions in relation to the issue of requests for access to justice, access to court documents under the open justice principles as they play out in the upper tribunal and have played out in the upper tribunal. And if your lordships considered that it was appropriate to make such comments in obiter or otherwise in relation to the desirability of various practicalities such as the desirability of a requester contacting other parties prior to making a formal application. That would, of course, in the commissioner's view, be of enormous assistance. I perhaps wonder if the Rules Committee would be so light as to disregard the considered view of the court of appeal.
I bet they would, and they'd be right to in a sense. But, okay.
In any event, I
Please, the areas you would encourage us not to be too restrained about are requesting documents first from the parties, so as not to trouble the court or tribunal, except where really necessary. Is that right?
Well, if you if you turn up my skeleton
Well, no, sorry, I, but
Taking this
What would be helpful, before we allow you to address us at any length on this, would be just to know where you're going with this. You obviously are disappointed that we said at the beginning of this hearing that we weren't likely to give any general guidance beyond what was in hearings to decide this case. Yep. And therefore you are trying to persuade us to be a bit less restrictive than we look to know we're going to be. Yes?
Yes, my lord.
And I just want to identify on what areas. So one is that one about requesting documents first. What are the others?
The requirement for notice to the parties, that's a follow-on. And to stress that it's particularly important in cases where there's a request for pleadings, skeleton arguments and witness statements prior to any hearing. And you'll see in our skeleton argument, we refer to the decision of the first tier tribunal in cider of Sweden.
Paragraph. It's all a bit rung though, isn't it? We're in an adversarial system, you're neutral, but you want us to decide various things on which you're neutral.
Not in relation to the specific merits of the appellant's case.
Your position is you're neutral on the outcome of the appeal.
On the outcome, on the specific outcome of the appeal, on the specific outcome of the request. We do have submissions in relation to the first ground, but they are more general. We do have a very narrow submission in relation to the second ground.
Yes, so on the, my lord was going through the points that you, you want us to, as he put it, be less restrictive about. So what was the third? The second was notice to the parties. What was the third?
Yes, my lord, perhaps if I give you the reference to my skeleton argument, paragraph forty-nine, beginning on page ninety-six of the core bundle. You'll see at page ninety-eight, which is subparagraph forty-nine E, we say that it would be desirable for the upper tribunal to adopt the requirement which I've just referred to. And then I go on to say, I, the reference to cider of Sweden.
Is in, is in F.
Is in, is in F. And then we say that a lot of this is argument directed at the reasons why it's desirable that these be approached, these, this particular approach to be adopted. But even in cases where a document has been referred to in open court, it's still important, we say, for the party responsible, any request of documents to be made to the party, to whom the documents, is responsible for the documents, for the request to be made to that party in the first instance and then to the upper tribunal on notice. And the reason for that is because even if the documents have already been read or referred to, which is very often the case, that it may nonetheless contain sensitive information.
Yes, quite, quite.
I, I, I'm, I'm launching into these points, my lord, because you've asked me for takeaway bullet points and the, what I'm doing is indicating the passages of my skeleton.
Yes, that, well, that's helpful, so.
But if, if in relation to the first ground, because you have asked me
Well, sorry, let's do one thing at a time. What you were helpfully doing, we don't promise to do it, but is that, is that we say at least something on the two points you've identified so far. Are you saying that if we look at para forty-nine of your skeleton, apart from some general subparas at the start, we will find here all the things that you would like us if you could, if we were prepared to say something about?
Yes, my lord.
Yes, I see. And any, are you prepared to say any more than the others or the first two ones you mentioned, the main ones?
The first two ones are the main ones, that the, subparagraph forty-nine D is the general point of overall approach, which is that it's not appropriate for the upper tribunal to adopt the CPR wholesale without regard to the particular nature of its jurisdiction.
Well, I, I see why you and those instruction you make these points, they all look like jolly good points. But in a sense, just the way you put it is illustrates how inappropriate it would be for us to say, by the way, upper tribunal Rules Committee, we draw to your attention the fact that your jurisdiction is different from that of the High Court and therefore all the civil courts and therefore you couldn't necessarily follow everything they do. That's just not, it's not our role.
Not phrase
In jobs, legislators.
My lord, I do agree. However.
Concerned with a particular kind of document, skeleton argument or written submissions, however it's described in the upper tribunal, in one particular chamber of the upper tribunal administered appeals and with a particular kind of case in that, in that chamber. And that's the, that's the decision we have to make on which you're neutral, but are you inviting us, it sounds as if you are, to branch out beyond that and speak about the upper tribunal generally with all its various chambers and different kinds of cases it has or about different kinds of document? Because that does seem to be certainly going further than we need to do to decide this appeal. There would therefore need to be a justification for us embarking on that kind of exercise. We do have other things to do as well.
Certainly, my lord. I would say to that in response to two points. First of all, Lady Justice Andrew's comments were the what prompted the commissioner to take the opportunity as an interested party. We appear as an interested party, but perhaps our contribution is today more in the nature of a third-party intervention because we are in the manner of a third party intervening neutral as regards the merits of the particular appeal. And we are seeking to assist the court with broader information about the context in which the appeal takes place. The second point, I would say in relation to your lordship's point, is that we are dealing with Dring first and foremost in Guardian News, both of which are very high-level statements of principle, which have to be applied in the particular case. And it will not surprise your lordships to find that anything you say by reference to the application in, to, of Dring's principles to this case will in due course be taken up in other parts of the upper tribunal, other chambers of the upper tribunal and other parts of the first tier tribunal. So, put another way, whether your lordships like it or not, you're going to be prayed in aid, whatever you say. And the commissioner's input today, or submissions, if I may, the commissioner's submissions today also have a negative quality, which is to dissuade this court, should it be so minded, to say anything broad-brush and terribly overbroad, such as all upper tribunal chambers should follow the CPR as closely as possible, not that that has been urged upon you.
I don't think you're likely to find us saying that.
Well, certainly the commissioner is very relieved, but there is always the benefit, one of the benefits of submissions of this kind is not just simply to urge the court to say the things that the commissioner considers to be desirable, but also to urge the court away from saying things the commissioner considers to be undesirable.
I get all this. This is all perfectly sensible stuff, Mr. Metcalfe, but I'm not sure it needs much development. You will, it would be implicit in what we've said that for a variety of reasons, we will not be saying the upper tribunal should follow the the CPR in every respect. Of course, they will be interested to see what the CPR does in a similar situation and decide whether it's a true analogy or not. But that's, that's as far as it goes, and it doesn't have much application in this particular case anyway.
Well, my lord, I don't mean then to trespass any further on your lordship's time in relation to this matter, given
Yeah, well, that's very helpful. Now, you did say you had something to say about ground one, and if
Ground one, I do, and this is addressing, again, avoiding what was said, avoiding addressing the particular merits.
Yeah, of course.
And the opening point is simply the obvious one, that a request for access to court documents under the open justice principle is not motive-blind. And that's a phrase which is frequently used by reference to the Freedom of Information Act, where requests are motive-blind.
Sorry, is not?
Motive-blind, my lord.
Motive-blind.
Motive-blind. Does that mean that the, the court ought to have regard to what the motive is?
Yes, my lord.
Yes, I see.
Which is the opposite of the case in the freedom, under the Freedom of Information Act. The fact that a person has made a request under the Act, their private or personal reasons or motives for doing so are irrelevant. It only matters whether the request has been made and then dealt with. And that is not the case, quite plainly, under the open justice principle, as indeed my lord Justice Colson has indicated in questions to my learned friend. Lady Hale made very clear that there is a requirement for a good reason. I'll put succinctly, a requester must provide a good reason for their request, explaining how it advances the open justice principle. And the only exception to this that one can discern in the current framework is that under paragraph five four C of the Rules Committee, of the CPR, excuse me, which is where one is requesting a statement of case or a public judgment and following the judgment of Mr. Justice Hay, of Nicklin, excuse me, in Hayden and Associated Newspapers. The approach there is that you do not need to give notice. And Mr. Justice Nicklin comes close to, if not outright saying, that there is an entitlement to receive it. Not as of right, but very close to.
Well, you're talking about the five four C
Yes.
Statements of case. Yeah, but that's all very interesting, but how does that, we're not dealing with such a case here.
Well, precisely, precisely, my lord, and I'm seeking to reinforce that point, that that is a very narrow circumstance created from the language of the CPR, which in any event does not apply to the upper tribunal. Not to say that the, for the reasons already discussed, that CPR cannot be used as a source of guidance, as indeed we find it is in the various cases set out in our skeleton argument. I'm not proposing, by the way, to take your lordships to those decisions, they are set out, but ARIA Technologies, my learned friend has already taken you to. Cider of Sweden is another. And also, you have, in addition to that, the decision of excuse me, my lord. DVLA, the Information Commissioner, which was another decision in the upper tribunal. But there have been relatively few decisions in the upper tribunal dealing with this point, and they have all been referred to in the skeleton argument. The point is then that my, my learned friend has already taken you to and your lordships have already addressed in some detail, the test as is laid out in GNM, the Guardian News case, but also in Dring, which is the fact-specific balancing exercise referred to, perhaps if we return very quickly to Dring, tab nine of the authorities bundle. And just have open paragraph
Can I just be clear about this? Perhaps you were about to deal with it, in which case just tell me to wait, but there's a certain amount of destruction of the balancing exercise and what goes into it. But are we to conceive of this as a balancing exercise which only becomes required once a threshold, though it may be a very low threshold, has been passed? So if you don't get over reasonable good reason.
Yes.
No question of a balancing exercise arises.
Yes, my lord.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that the existence or the existence and/or strength of a reason simply goes into the balancing exercise, you don't even go there first.
Yes, my lord.
Yeah.
It's a prior requirement in this case, and it's made abundantly plain from the language of Lady Hale's speech in Dring, that unless a requester identifies a good reason for their request, then you don't get the effect-specific balancing
And by all means do it your own way, but before we get to looking at the balancing exercise, do you have any submissions about how one recognizes a good reason? What's the test of a good reason?
I don't have a, I don't have a succinct test to give you. I was going to, forgive me, my lord, I was just going to take you very quickly to a a point which Lord Justice Malais had raised with my learned friend, which was that the default whether Lady Hale and her judgment, her speech, had endorsed the idea of a
Yes, you go ahead, that's fine, yeah.
And what I was going to ask your lordships to do was to look at paragraph forty-four. So, our beginning of paragraph forty-four, Lady Hale is doing no more than setting out what was said by Lord Justice Tolson, that the default position is that the public should be allowed access not only to parties' written submissions and arguments, but also to the documents which have been placed before the court and referred to during the hearing. The next sentence is, in my submission, important. It follows that it should not be limited to those which the judge has been asked to read or has said that he has read. One object of the exercise is to enable the observer to relate to the judge what has done, decided to the material which was before him. It is not impossible, though, that it must be rare that the judge has forgotten or ignored some important piece of information which was before him. If access is limited to what the judge has actually read, then the less conscientious the judge, the less transparent is his or her decision. My lords, that's, beginning with that second sentence, that is Lady Hale's gloss or elaboration of what Lord Justice Tolson said in Guardian News. It doesn't, although one can identify similar sentiments, it is not something which Lord Justice Tolson himself said. It follows then that Lady Hale was indeed, although she did not use the words and terms, was indeed endorsing the default rule.
Well, no, but the problem is, the case for saying she did endorse the default rule doesn't really come from what she said in that paragraph, it comes from what she said in para forty.
Yes. Well, that's also, that supports, that supports the position, but this was a point which my learned friend has already made. This was, the point in relation to paragraph forty-four is Lady Hale is going back to what Lord Justice Tolson had said in GNM and adding her own gloss in addition to that. So she's plainly not dissenting from it. Now, that then doesn't get over the point. What, how then do you reconcile what she then says in paragraph forty-five? That is to say, it's for the person seeking access to explain why he seeks it and how granting him access will advance the open justice principles. That's a necessary step. That's a prerequisite in my submission. You don't get to the default position until you follow that step. So, in a sense, the order is reversed.
Yes, so you say that, you say that reading the two together, what she is saying is she doesn't question the default position as such, but that is the default position on the assumption
That you've identified a good reason.
That you've, that you've shown a good reason.
If you haven't shown a good reason, of course, the default position will not avail you.
Yeah.
But, in a sense, the default position is assisting those who have identified a good reason and are then, then the court is engaged in the balancing exercise, the fact-specific balancing exercise. And on that point, we do agree with my learned friend that it is not a question of a burden of proof on the requester to show that there are no countervailing principles
Yeah.
or that the request is not disproportionate. That these are matters that the court must be satisfied as to those matters being made out. But it would be incorrect to say that the burden is on the requester to show that those factors do not apply.
Thank you.
The only burden which is on the requester is to identify a good reason and show why it advances the
Therefore, and no criticism of her, but as my lord, Lord Justice Tullson already slightly hinted, being only a summary, the final sentence of para forty-seven isn't quite accurate because the way it's structured is that non-parties have to show not only a good reason, but also show that there are no countervailing and the granting of rest and, and the granting of rest will not be impractical or disproportionate.
Yes.
That i- it's, 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 um, with hindsight, slightly loosely worded that.
Well, it's, it's, it's possible to see that it could be misinterpreted as, as requiring, placing a burden which, which doesn't exist. There is a burden, but it's only to show a good reason. Uh, that's nonetheless a, a, a burden that has to be discharged. Now, as to the quality of the reason, we say, and this is in particular, a point made in more detail, if I may give you the reference. Paragraph forty-nine H of our skeleton argument. So, the starting po- the, the starting point is that a person seeking access to documents has no right to be granted, that's paragraph forty-five of Dream. It's instead upon them to explain why they seek it and why granting them access will advance the open justice principle. The justification will be particularly important, we say, where a request for pleadings is made at the pre-hearing stage. Now, there is, of course, concerns, uh, particularly when one looks at the Sidder of Sweden case in the First Air Tribunal. Um, concerns as to the volume of material that has been put in, uh, before the First Air Tribunal. And the sensitivity of that material, given the nature of many first-air tribunal proceedings. Uh, in Sidder of Sweden, it was held that, that the fact that it was a very early stage, no hearing had yet been taken place. Uh, then it couldn't be said that this was helping understand. But we say the opposite is true where.
So I see that pre-hearing stage is a bit ambiguous. Surely the ideal time for it to be made is the, what I might call shortly pre-hearing stage. So that, uh, there's an imminent trial and the non-party wishes to understand what's happening at the trial.
Yes.
You mean here, pre-hearing stage, you mean a very early stage?
Yes, my lord.
Yes, I see, yeah.
Also, bear in mind that in the First Air Tribunal, you, you don't generally have, you can sometimes have, but you don't generally have case management conferences or pre-trial, pre-trial reviews.
But anyway, this is just the sort of point which with respect, doesn't arise on the facts of this case and we won't be saying much about.
Uh, the commissioner came by try in these circumstances. But we do say that in.
And, and the slight difficulty, Mister Metcalf, about e- e- H is obviously one understands the point of it's been seen by the judge, then there may be no countervailing factors, but there could be because the judge could see a document, but it may be redacted or it may, you know, the, those sorts of points.
Yes.
But, but we want to, whilst we don't want to give general guidance that doesn't apply, we, uh, certainly speaking for myself, I would not want to encourage these sorts of applications to be made after the hearing. Open justice means really what it says, and it means understanding the case in play. Uh, and, and it would be not good if we ended up in a position where after every hearing, there were then scores of applications for the documents at months and years after the event. The documents might have been seen by the judge, but, you know, the judge will have forgotten about it and everybody will have forgotten about it.
Yes, my lord, uh, and, and if I may, that, that goes to the proportion, no, excuse me, the proportionality point, which, uh, Lady Hale makes. That if one comes back years after the case and, and asks for all these documents, then that's going to be, uh, a manifestly disproportionate exercise.
But do you have any observations about my point? That's obviously true if it's years after the case. But what if it's even only slightly after the case?
If it's two weeks after the case, my lord, uh, uh, by way of an example, I, I'm afraid I, I'm, I'm not able to agree with, uh, my Lord, uh, Justice Colson on, on that point. Um, indeed, it would be very much, very, quite common in a number of cases for people to seek, uh, court documents i- in that type of timeframe.
It might be common, but would it be justified?
It would be justified.
One, it's inherently more disproportionate.
Well.
That's the point which I, I made to, um, to, to, to Mister Wills, which I think in principle he accepted, he didn't say it was a reason why it couldn't be done, but it's inherently more disproportionate because as soon as you haven't got the parties in front of you. Um, and because I think you're all agreed, there's, and always going to be a notice requirement. Um, you have an elaborate procedure, even if it's still fresh in everyone's minds, it's still a whole new point.
Yes.
And you have my lord's point also, that, that they would have gone home from the hearing and thought, that's that then. And then suddenly, a month later, or whatever it turns out to be, they're being written to by the court saying some journalist or some person who says they're interested, uh, now wants to have access to A, B and C. And can you please tell us what you think about it?
But if I may, I, 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 I don't accept the premise of what I understood Lord Justice Colson's, uh, point which was being put to me. Which was that the, the, uh, justification of the open justice principle in public understanding is, is, is related to the period in which the trial or, or proceedings are taking place.
It's not, it's not, clearly it's not limited to that. Well, but, but that, that, that is a major part of it.
In, in which case I would say to that, that very often the, the business of public understanding. Um, I say this, I, as somebody receives regular requests from other members of chambers to write something for the chamber's blog about such and such judgment, which has gone on. Um, it's often the case that people come to judgments after, uh, in, in the period after they've been handed down and seek to understand them better. And it may be, it couldn't rule out that the business of public understanding is furthered in that period by, by bloggers or, or members of the public right, or, or journalists, seeking to understand, um, what went on. Um, obviously we can see, for example, in.
Yes, but, but without s- suggesting, which is not your part of the case, um, that uh, the mere fact that the submissions have been set out by the judge in the reasoning means nobody ever needs to see the skeleton. Certainly not suggesting that absolute position. It will be, uh, often, sometimes, you will get very little added value from looking at the skeletons, other than to mark the judge's homework, but in terms of the public understanding of the reasoning, um, the skeleton won't add much.
That, in my submission, that seeks to import slightly more into the, the guidance which was laid down in Dream than, than perhaps may be found on, 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 on the, on the page, because it's.
I, I, I see, she says, uh, she, Dream para forty-four, I appreciate, yes, I, I, I'm not saying I'm an absolute position, I'm just talking about the proportionality balance in a situation, once the judge has handed down judgment, is a bit different.
The, I, I accept it, I accept that, my lord. And I, I, I do accept that the longer the period of time between a judgment being delivered and, uh, the request for documents, uh, the more that will weigh in the proportionality assessment. But the fact that information, there's already sufficient information in the public judgment to enable a person to understand what, what went on, is only effective in the proportionality exercise in my submission.
Yeah.
It's not a barrier.
I mean, the delay, the delay point in proportionality is made by Lady Hale in paragraph forty-seven.
Yes, my lord.
She makes that point, that, that, uh, the best time to apply is during the trial.
Is, is during the trial, but my submission is that people do frequently come to, uh, the matters after.
Sure they do, it's a question of whether, extent to which that's, uh.
Which goes to the, the, the reasonableness of their request is, is, is a matter to be weighed against the, the time, the amount of time. And I, and this is a point which the commissioner himself is concerned about, particularly in relation to the upper tribunal and the first air tribunal. Because bear in mind that there is a much larger number of litigants in person in, uh, these proceedings and is in the case in the, uh, in the courts. Um, of course, all litigants in person must, persons must comply with the rules. Uh, but often their documents, um, may not be, um, properly considered in relation to which matters are sensitive. They might not have made the necessary applications to, to redact information. And there will generally be a great deal of work which has to be done after the fact.
Yes, and the informationary commissioner's experience here is, is actually as a regular litigant.
Yes, my lord. But I, 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 perhaps I'm, I, I, I agree, my lord, of course.
Yeah.
Paragraph forty-seven of, of, of Lady Hale's judgment is, is, is of course, uh, right here, and proportionality is, is a factor. Um, just if I may, that, if I may just take instructions and check.
Of course, no, no, that's, that's just the sort of, um, contribution we were hoping for.
Um, my lords, uh, those are my submissions in relation to the first ground. Uh, you have my submissions in the skeleton in relation to the, the, the more general points of guidance, um, whatever.
If, 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 if we have a sudden, um, uh, conversion to the idea that we should write an essay about all this, um,
It need only be gradual, my lord.
Find the material there.
It only be a gradual conversion, my lord, so long as it's before the judgment is. Unless you.
Thank you very much, Mister Metcalf. Um, if we are going to entertain submissions on round two, we'll hear you on those at the right time. Um, uh, Mister Wills, um, uh, do you want to, anything you need to reply on arising out of Mister Metcalf's submissions before we rise and decide where we are on two?
Uh, yes, I have some very brief points may, to, to make in relation to that, but also I wanted to, um, to deal with the homework that the court, um, set us this morning, which I've dealt with over the shorter adjournment. Um, and also perhaps just to correct one natural case I misspoke on it. Um, in no particular order, in relation to attendance, C V P attendance at the hearing, you, you asked about that. Um, so, uh, so I'm instructed that Mister Moss requested by email, um, that he be permitted to attend by C V P as a member of the public and the blogger. Um, and that, that request was granted.
A member of public and blogger?
Uh, yes, that was how it was put.
So that's not something he mentions in his application here, that he's a blogger.
I know, he, but he, but he is, he is a blogger, but that, that is correct, it doesn't appear in, in the application. There, there is, uh, but there was, I, I, I understand there's no form that was completed for that, but the tribunal.
Okay, that's fine, so he, 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 he asked to attend as a member of public and blogger and, uh.
And that request was granted and, and he attended.
So it wasn't based on his, um, uh, uh, disability, no?
The, he, the, the reason for his attending by C V P, uh, that I'm not sure of, the, the tribunal may well have been aware of that.
Exactly.
Um, in relation to contact with Mister Haron and the other parties before making his application. So my instructions are that his understanding was, well, he didn't have the contact details and that the court, the tribunal wouldn't provide them. Um, I perhaps just can show you very briefly, my lords, what happened after judgment was handed down. Since supplemental bundle seventeen. Um, if I may just take you there. Uh, so that was on the eleventh of May, which was obviously post-judgment. And so there you see that he's, Mister Moss is picking up on the point that it suggests in the judgment, he should have contacted parties directly. So he then asked for their email and.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Uh, and in fact, you see what happened on the next page was that the tribunal responded, the registrar responded, saying that with reference to Mister Haron, she was in a position to provide them. Um, because he'd expressly stated in his written submissions, of course, that those written submissions haven't been seen and haven't been seen by Mister Moss, but the tribunal has seen them. And so his contact email address was then provided. Um, but the tribunal goes on to, to say, as you see, that he didn't have consent from the Information Commissioner or Rotherham Council. Um, and, and, and therefore, but, but suggested.
That's a slightly different point, but yes, so the, but what that, that makes good, what I'd read somewhere, perhaps from here, that he didn't actually have Mister Harry, he, he, he might have been able to, to write to the tribunal to get the address, which they could only have given him if they had to ask Mister Haron, unless he happened to have said so in advance, that he could have the address.
And which he needed so much, so much later. And, and then, um, thirdly, I think I was asked about whether or not the appellant asked for the commissioners or Mister Haron's submissions. Um, it is, the, the submissions on this application, I think the question related to, obviously not the submissions in relation to the Haron proceedings. Um, and the, the, the simple response to that is, um, he didn't know that the, the submissions had been made until the judgment was handed down, because those directions weren't provided to or served upon him.
Well, I see, he didn't see the direct, he'd say, it's not just he didn't know, he didn't know they've, whether or not they've been received, he didn't know that they've been directed.
Didn't know that they'd been directed all made.
Yes. Because if he'd known they'd been directed, a point might be made.
Could have asked.
You'd expect they probably had been made, can I see them? But he didn't even know they'd been directed.
That, 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 that's what I'm instructed, yes. Uh, and in relation to, you asked for the case reference.
I'm sure you're right, can we just, if you, if you, those are your fractions, that, that does slightly surprise me because, um, so the directions at fourteen fifteen, he never saw?
I'm just double, I am just double checking that. All of these directions.
It would be odd and.
I did not, we, can you? We, we are, we are going to double check that. He, I mean, he, it, it, I would submit it's quite clear that he wasn't treated, uh, as being in any way a part, effectively as being a party to this decision. Because he wasn't providing, the tribunal didn't direct that the, so that the, any representations be served upon him or indeed provide them of its own, on its own direction. Um, and so he wasn't aware, and that's, that's one of the points that the court will have seen, that we picked up on with reference to, to Article Six. And I might add, we would also say it would be unfair, it was unfair at common law.
Yes, it would, it would be useful to have the, um, recovery letter for this, but, but probably nobody has it now.
Well, the final paragraph of the direction says that they should be provided, issued to the parties.
Yeah.
By email, so perhaps that was, whatever was contended by the judge. Because he interpreted as meaning literally the parties, but not the non-parties.
We should have took, we should of course tell the court if I discover anything otherwise. But that, but that certainly was, was, um, my understanding, my trusty listeners is just to check that.
Surprised, but it might have happened, perhaps in the way my lord suggested, but that, that, those are your instructions.
No, no, I'm, I'm afraid, my lord, we, we just say it forms part of a, a sort of, a, a wider feature of the, the unfortunate unfairness that took place.
We have, we have the main point about that, but that's helpful, yeah.
Um, it, you asked, I think, for the references to the contempt proceedings in which Mister Moss was involved in against the Royal London Borough of Kingston.
Yes.
Um, I, I can give you those references now, we can also, if it would assist the court, send you.
Specifically of the application to this court.
Uh, I've got, I've got, I've got both, I've got the case reference for the High Court, twenty twenty-three E W H C twenty-seven K B.
Twenty twenty-three E W H C.
Twenty-seven Kings Bench.
Yeah.
And then in this court, I think this was repeated, uh, reported in the weeklys, but the neutral citation is twenty twenty-three E W C A Civ one four three eight. And the date of that decision, um, was the thirtieth of November, twenty twenty-three, I believe.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, yes, of, of, of November of twenty twenty-three.
So, I mean, that is very unlikely to contain any relevant, but even if it did, the, that was post date C.
It's all of this.
Post date, yeah.
Uh, in relation to the question that was raised about the relevant paragraph in Hayden and Associated Newspapers, um, my lord, uh, Lord Justice Miles, um, got there before me, it is indeed paragraph sixty-five. But that, but that is also, uh, uh, clear on the face of the rules, um, and that you, you have the rules in, uh, uh, twenty, talking here, sorry, about the C five point four D of the CPR and the process for making applications, that's at seven seventy of the bundle, of the authorities bundle. And just lastly, in terms of, uh, sweeping up, uh, these tasks and homework. Um, I may have misspoken in relation to the point about when submissions were made in respect of this, the ju- the upper tribunal duty point, if I can put it shortly. That with the, the, the suggestion that was made by the appellant, that there was a duty in reliance on, on ARIA um, upon the upper tribunal to provide documents. Um, that point wasn't made in the July application, we, we, we see that your, your lordships now have that.
Yes.
It was made when he initially then made the, the request with reference to open, or the further request with reference to open justice. Um, and the tribunal went on to direct they'd have to make an application. And it is right to say that in that context, the, the tribunal, um, and this is in the supplemental bundle, sorry, let's get the page number. On, on the tenth of January, the tri- the tribunal referred to the fact it wasn't. Uh, sorry, page reference seven in the supplemental bundle. Sorry, apologize, that's the wrong page reference. Do apologize, my lords, I just want to make sure I give you the right ones. But anyway, the tribunal indicated that it wasn't prepared to treat the application on that basis. And of course, that was further developed when he then made his application. And this goes to the paragraph thirty-six point, just wanted to be clear about what was done there.
Probably page nine, isn't it?
Page nine of which bundle, my lord? Sorry, yes, that is incorrect, that's correct, you are ahead of me, my lord.
Second paragraph.
And essentially, so if we can put it that way, the criticism in paragraph thirty-six must relate to his having raised it.
I think that must be right, yes.
Not with reference to the July application, because, but it is suggested that sorry, just slightly
You would say that doesn't undermine your submission, that it wasn't irrelevant.
Exactly so, my lord, the reason that there's a slight confusion here is because it does seem to be potentially suggested in thirty-six that that relates to September, the September twenty-two rejection, which was the rejection of the first. So that's just that there may be a confusion, that's all I was going to say by way of clarification. In terms of the points made by Mr Metcalf, we respectfully agree with the submissions that he made. And just to pick up, just to pick up on two points, I mean, you have my submissions on during, we agree with the submissions that he made towards the end of his submissions on that, just to pick up on two points in relation to my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson's point in respect of essentially that open justice is engaged most strongly during the hearing, when a hearing is taking place. I would just make the point that very often, non-parties won't know that hearings are taking place, and that's particularly the case in the tribunal system, because not least because they're not advertised in the same way that you might, for example, see before this court or before the High Court. And you may not find out about a case until afterwards. And we say that the open justice principle would remain as strongly engaged, particularly where we're not talking about a significant passage of time. And finally, many of the judgments that you have in this bundle, but judgments referred to perhaps the most of the judgments are judgments where you have applications having been made after proceeding, after a hearing has taken place in proceedings, that is very common, perhaps the most common context in which these applications come before the courts, I just wanted to make that observation. I don't propose saying anything else about ground one.
Very much indeed. We will rise, not probably very long, so don't go too far, and consider whether we will to be heard on round two.
Where
That the directions were made in September twenty twenty-two.
No, it can't have been, because the application was in January. It's all rather mysterious. No, the directions were made on the fifteenth of March.
Actually got them Sunday.
So he did get them.
Yeah, no, I know, I didn't, that's why I was
Yeah, I thought I understood that they weren't providing, and that's what Justice Miles pointed out, because it does suggest it.
How many people watching?
There in the supplemental, there in the So it's not like Well, he still didn't know that they'd been made, they weren't
So we don't know what would have happened.
No, exactly.
It's a marker that could sit out to
This is a very important point to Mr Moss.
Cash recognition? Problems we have?
Laptop top doing for It's on battery shape, but I might just turn it off just to save We have considered the helpful submissions from both parties. We propose to allow the appeal on the basis of the arguments that were under ground one, and in those circumstances, there is no need for us to hear submissions on ground two. The order will subject any submissions from the parties, simply say, appeal allowed, because I think there's no actual consequential relief required, because he's already got the documents, hasn't he? Have I got that wrong?
He's got the documents from Mr Haron.
Yes.
But he doesn't have the submissions, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, from the other parties. They were, Mr Haron eventually provided them after.
Yes, exactly, so that
But the other parties, so that, and that's why I said in my skeleton, that's why I invited the court, if it were minded, to allow the appeal, effectively to direct that those documents be provided, rather than, of course, to remit.
Well, the, let's just think out the practicalities, the short answer is that we'll ask the parties to draw an order, and I don't suppose that'd be a difficulty, but to tease out any hidden difficulty about that. So which submissions is that he hasn't received? He hasn't received Rotherham's.
Yes, it's Rotherham's and the Information Commissioners.
So far as the Information Commissioners are concerned, I'm sure if directed, they will provide them. Rotherham will have to as well. But if Rotherham didn't take any part in the appeal, they really haven't got any lotus on the form of the order.
Yeah, I would respectfully agree.
They may technically have lotus, but
Well, I suppose
I think the correct course would be simply for the two of you to draft an order and saying what you think time Rotherham should have to provide them.
Well, I was going to say, the only practical question may be whether the, whether those whether they are directed, parties are directed to provide them, or whether they are provided from the upper tribunal's records, of course, what we don't know is whether the upper tribunal holds them. So it may be easier if there's a direction that the parties provide them, I would suggest. But I don't think it matters in terms of the result or the practical effect.
The sensible thing would be to draft it on the basis the parties provide them with a liberty to apply in the event, in the event of, well, I would just put it a general liberty to apply. The thinking behind that is that if there are practical difficulties, because Rotherham don't have them anymore. Or just conceivably, if Rotherham wants to ask for some redactions, but they missed their chance, really, to do that, but still let them, you'd have won the point of principle. I think provide a draft order directing, say, fourteen days liberty to apply and no orders to cross, because that has been is that actually in the form of an order already? Well, up to you. If it's already been ordered, strictly speaking, it doesn't need to be ordered now, but it might be better to put it in all the same.
Okay. Sorry, I need to update the court on one point, while you rose, we did receive further instructions in relation to the service of the directions point. I trust isn't going to change your lordship's decision, but the the directions, I'm told, were served on the sixteenth, the day that they were produced, but they were made by Mrs Justice they were served on Mr Moss, but he wasn't provided with the submissions themselves.
Yes, I see.
I thought you needed to correct that.
No, thank you for correcting that. I did take you by surprise.
Sorry, may I just, may I just turn my back for one moment?
Yes.
Sorry, I do need to just raise one further point, this doesn't concern anybody else. But as it stands, we still don't know whether exceptional case funding will be granted by legal aid agencies despite the application having been made some time ago. In the event that it were to be granted, we would need the standard provision in the order in relation to the assessment of publicly funded
Include a liberty to apply for that as well. And just, I don't think I need to go in the order. Liberty to apply does not mean that you have to serve a formal application and pay four hundred quid, or whatever it is. Liberty, perhaps put liberty to apply in correspondence to the civil appeals office, that's fine. Now, I forget whether I said, the order will say reasons to follow. I was going to make the point that we needed to say reasons to That's exactly, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't say that, but I now have. Yes, the reasons will be circulated on the same basis as if it was a reserved decision. I won't give you the usual language about it, but it is important that if it is circulated to anyone, and this message ought perhaps to go back particularly to Mr Moss, who's used to being a legitimate person, that he will be being shown the draft judge, draft reasons only for the very limited purposes set out in the Council on Four Wales case, and if he shows them to anyone else, there is, he's at risk of being held liable for contempt of court, I hope that will be brought over to him.
Of course, I shall ensure that's conveyed.
On live stream anyway. Well, it just remains to thank both councils for their helpful and informative submissions, both in writing and already, thank you.